All right, good evening, everybody. We're going to get started. Everybody could sit down, take a seat. I'm sorry that we're starting late, but we're going to kick it off here. My name's Dan Saltzman. I'm one of the co-chairs of the Brookline Neighborhood Alliance. On behalf of the BNA, the Brookline Town Meeting Members Association, and the Brookline League of Women Voters, I want to welcome everybody and thank you all for coming. We appreciate it. It's going to be an interesting night, I think. You know, the purpose of this forum is to inform and educate people. We have two articles that we're going to discuss tonight. There's obviously a lot more than that on the warrant, but these two are fairly controversial, and they affect Brookline's neighborhoods, and that's why we're going to talk about them here. You know, on its face, Article Six, which is the proposed settlement neighborhood conservation district, that affects one particular neighborhood. But, you know, there'll be precedent set by this, and I think in that respect, it really affects all of Brookline's neighborhoods. Article Nine, a proposed ban on plastic bags, shopping bags, you know, that affects everybody who shops in Brookline. And then, of course, many would argue, I'm sure, that it affects the entire planet. So both of these articles are important. There's some controversy behind them. They affect us all, and, you know, I'm excited to learn about them tonight, and I'm sure you are, too. So without, you know, any further ado, I'm going to introduce tonight's moderator, who is Amelia Koch.
Well, now, that is a first. Thank you. So for tonight's debate, there are a set of ground rules that I'm going to relate to you. Proponents, and that's the entire team of proponents, will have a total of 10 minutes, and opponents will have the same 10 minutes. Then the floor will be open for questions and for comments from the floor. The question, so anyone in the audience can ask a question or make a comment. And you'll note --
Louder, please.
I'd be happy to talk louder. Thank you. And I'm sorry, my, the quality of my voice is often harder for people to hear. You'll note that there are mics on the ceiling, so when you ask your question or comment, we won't actually be bringing you up, nor will we be bringing a mic to you. You'll just speak, and the mics will pick you up, because there's ambient miking in the room. So we're asking people to keep questions and comments to one minute, and then the proponents and the opponents will have, each have one minute to respond to those questions and/or comments. And then, finally, the proponents and opponents will each have three minutes to make a closing statement. First up is Article Six, the proposed settlement neighborhood conservation district. Representing the proponents is Eleanor Demons of the settlement neighborhood. Representing the opponent's view is Michael Merrill from precinct, he's the precinct 14 town meeting member. And going first will be Eleanor.
Thank you. My name's Eleanor Demons. I live at 27 Acres Avenue, and so today, we're going to talk a little bit about the settlement neighborhood and what brought us to write this warrant article for a neighborhood conservation district for our neighborhood. So first, we're going to take you on a little tour of the neighborhood. And this is an aerial view, obviously, and the basic settlement map that we are proposing encompasses, this is Loveland Road, Elliott Street across from Heath School, up Acres Avenue, part of Doran, and then Acres Terrace. And that's basically the settlement neighborhood as defined by warrant Article Six. It comprises 70 property owners altogether. This is 27 Acres Avenue where I live. I've lived there for 27, sorry, 20, 10 years, and I teach at Heath School, and I've taught there for about 22 years. This house was saved from demolition from the Preservation Commission in '94 because they felt it had significant historic value. It's one of the earliest homes in the Irish settlement, and therefore, they felt that it warranted being saved. Many of the homes, the settlement grew up out of the Irish workers that provided services to the wealthier folks in Fisher Hill and across Route 9, and this was an opportunity for them to be able to buy their own homes and be able to start their families independently from tenement housing that would be traditionally where these people would be, would live. Just wanted to pick out some defining features and characteristics of our neighborhood. We're very densely packed already. The homes are very close to the street. The porches are almost right on the street. This is a typical two-family house. It has a hip roof with dormers, four dormers on the top, and porches are in the front. You can see there's just a few short steps to the sidewalk, very, just a few plantings on the side, and pretty much no yard at all. This is an example of a historic triple-decker in the settlement. Again, it has the three porches facing forward, and even though it's very tall, it's in the geographically lowest part of the settlement, so that when you walk from the Chestnut Hill Avenue down toward Heath School, you're walking down a slight incline, so that the roof lines of the houses do line up, and these very tall triple-deckers really don't dwarf the surrounding homes around them due to that small incline, and they are grouped at the bottom of the street at the lowest part of the neighborhood. This is another two-family house that actually underwent some renovations as well, and this is the kind of renovation work that we would not expect would trigger a review from the neighborhood conservation district outlines, and I'll talk a little bit more about that after. And so the homeowner here is an architect, and he took a lot of care to make sure that the original lines of the house retain their character and that the house didn't become too large en masse, to really look out of place or to make the surrounding homes look very dwarfed and small in comparison. These are two-family, two-family homes, side by side. These are the homes that you see when you're coming down Chestnut Hill Avenue toward Boylston Street, and you're looking across Warren Field. These two homes, we call them twin homes. They were built about the same period and the similar design. The house on the right side, 22 Acres Avenue, recently underwent some renovations and some additional space was added. Again, given the very minor restrictive nature of the warrant article, this would not be something that would be enough to even trigger a review by the, by the board of the neighborhood conservation district. This is 12 Acres Avenue, and this was one of the reasons that really organized the neighborhood together. We found out, we got a notice for a hearing at the Preservation Commission, that this was going to be coming toward, to the Preservation Commission for a hearing, and this house was, is slated for demolition. It was put off for a year, and it's going to be demolished in May, as it stands right now. And given, there's been two other large projects that have gone up in the neighborhood at, recently, in '94, and then just finished in 2012, that we feel really are quite large in scale for our neighborhood. Now, given the current zoning laws, we heard the developer speak at the Preservation Commission hearing on October 30th. He intends to max out this lot, and because it's zoned one-to-one, he can do that currently without triggering any zoning variance whatsoever, and he would be allowed to put in, by zoning, a 6,000-square-foot home. This home currently is 2,600 square feet, and so we really feel that that would really increase the mass of that lot and would not really fit in with the character of the neighborhood. Again, just another modest home. This is, home is on Acres Terrace. You can see the porch is very close to the street. It has a little garden, very charming, and this is the kind of home that we're trying to preserve. Some additional homes on Acres Terrace, very small in scale. This is Doran, and these are some more scenes of Elliott Street. This shows a new project side by side by an older home on Loveland Road, and we can see that the newer construction really dwarfs the smaller home significantly, and this is the, another project that, again, really alarmed our neighborhood and caused us to try to organize to do something. Since the NCD was approved by town about a year ago, we decided to use that tool to try to preserve our neighborhood. And the intention is not to prohibit people from adding additional square footage to their current living spaces to meet the needs of their family. Article Six stipulates that a design review would only be triggered in the cases of exterior construction that adds 30% or more to the current FAR and affects the envelope of the house, demolition, and new construction. Those are the only conditions under which a trigger would occur. Article Six, we believe, is a tool for us to prevent developers from coming into our neighborhood, maxing out the properties. We heard the developer say that. Those were his words. To max out their properties without requiring any zoning variances, because we are zoned one-to-one currently. And then, those developers are going to leave, and they're going to maximize their profits. We will lose the character and charm of our neighborhood, one house at a time, and once a house is gone, it won't be replaced. It's irreplaceable. And this is why we are moving with Article Six, and we have organized to do that. Thank you.
And now, I'd like to invite the opponents to the mic, please. That would be Michael Merrill.
And Michael, just to remind you, that's --
Thank you. Thank you very much. I'm very pleased to be here tonight and to be invited to speak on this article, which I think is a very important article, not only for our neighborhood, but also for the town of Brookline. My name is Michael Merrill. I live at 149 Elliott Street. I've lived there since 1983. I'm a town meeting member from precinct 14, and I have been for over 20 years. My house where I live is not in the neighborhood conservation district, but in 1993, I was lucky enough to be able to buy a three-family house at 119 Elliott Street, which is in the neighborhood conservation district as initially filed with the town. Currently, there is an amendment which would take that home out of the NCD, along with four other homes that are immediately contiguous to that. But regardless of whether my home, or my home that I own as an investment, is in the NCD or not, that really doesn't matter to me. This NCD article is a bad article. It's bad for the neighborhood, and it's bad for the town. An NCD is a second, third, or fourth, or fifth, however you want to count it, layer of administration that is imposed on homeowners who want to do things to their homes. You go, "Well, what's wrong with that? We all need to make sure that our homes are within the sort of context of the town." And I say, "What's wrong with that?" Is that we already have a zoning bylaw. So the zoning bylaw protects the neighborhood. People go, "Well, this zoning bylaw doesn't really protect the neighborhood the way we want it to be protected." And I can tell you that the neighborhood, unlike the pictures that you've seen here today, really is a very diverse neighborhood in terms of its homes. It's not all small, little homes, very close to the sidewalk with little porches. Just the homes that have been shown on the, on the pictures are that way. In fact, it's very diverse. The homes are very different. There are very large homes, like my homes. There are brick homes. There are homes that are very close to the sidewalk, and there are homes that are set back. All of Elliott Street, for example, is set way up above a stone wall, which most of the neighborhood does not look like Doran and Elliott, and Acres and Loveland. And across the street from Elliott, for example, is a Heath School, which is a very large school, which has no homes. So I think on that side of Elliott Street, the neighborhood concept really doesn't apply. I do agree that Loveland, Acres, and Doran, Acres Terrace does make sense, but even within those streets, the homes and the architecture is quite diverse. So what we're adding here is a layer of regulation and administration in addition to zoning, so that if you're a homeowner and you wanted to do something to your home in addition to 30% of your footprint, you would not only have to go to the Preservation Commission if you wanted to knock it down, for example, you would have to go to the building department first, and then the planning board, and then the zoning board of appeals. And now, in addition to that, you would have to go to the neighborhood conservation district. One of the differences between the neighborhood conservation district and the zoning board is that if you were to change zoning, you would need to get a two-thirds vote of town meeting. So for example, when the neighborhood says, "Well, we don't want to have a one-to-one zoning," well, then, today, you would have to go to town meeting and get a two-thirds vote to change the one-to-one to something less than that. But the NCD only has to be 51%. So why not go for the NCD? It only takes 51%, as opposed to two-thirds. I find that to be a problem. If you're going to do something to your property, you want to change the zoning, you should have to go with two-thirds. Also, people would say, "Well, what's the big deal, Mike? We have many regulations on our homes. We have local historic districts. We have zoning." And this is just another one of those things, and what's the problem? You just go to the, go to the board, and they'll approve it. One of the problems is, is this NCD-enabling legislation creates a board. The board is just now being put together. There are no design regulations. There are no fees that have been established. There are no procedures that have been established. The NCD-enabling legislation is quite vague and general, so that by going into this legislation the way it is now, we really don't know what it is that we're going to get. We're asked to trust that everything will be fine and that everybody's projects will be approved, when in fact, we know that's not to be, not going to be the case. Otherwise, why would we have the board to begin with? The idea is to have the board to stop people from doing what they want to do. So we have a, an extra layer of regulation, and then people would say, "Well, there's nothing wrong with that, Mike. You should accept that." And they point to the zoning code, where we have a huge book of precedent and regulations. There is no zoning book for an NCD. It's all being made up. I find that disturbing. But mostly, and most important about this article that I find disturbing is, we're affecting significant assets owned by individuals. People who have their, most of their life savings are in their homes. They purchased a home. It has value. The value includes, perhaps, adding on to that home. It includes selling it to somebody who might want to develop it, and this regulation, which can be passed by 51% of town meeting, can take away your right to do that. So you go, "Well, okay." Everybody has to give up something, as I've heard, for the general good. Okay, so we're asking people to give up their hard-earned money, their life savings, perhaps, maybe where they want their children to be able to get a nest egg when they move on, and we're asking them to do that for the general good. Well, I think if you want to ask people to do that, you need a very high percentage of buy-in from the neighborhood. And when you talk about local historic districts in this town, we traditionally talked about a buy-in of 80% or 85%. When I say that, I mean people who have voted in favor of doing this. The settlement NCD, if you accept the figures that have been offered, has a maximum of 65% buy-in. So 65% have said that they approve, and a number of people have said they've not approved. A number of people say they're undecided. But the point is that can we restrict people's homes where 65% of the people say that this is the way it should be, and another 35% of the people either are no or undecided? Even more important than that is how the 65% is verified. In this case, the proponents, and I believe they're acting in good faith, went door-to-door. They talked to people, and they produced a chart of people that are in favor, and a chart of people that are undecided, and a chart of people that are unresponsive. In my view, this is not satisfactory. If you're going to take away people's rights to their homes, we should have the article, and we should have people signing, indicating that they're in favor of the article. Write on the article. Not only that, but the article, when people go to the homes, should be handed in full to those people. When this article was first proposed, it was solely for teardowns, but later, it became any construction over 20%. Now, it's become any construction over 30%. Initially, you were able to opt out. How do I know that? Because I was allowed to opt out, and then I was put back in, and now I've been taken out. But people, my point is that people, when they said to the proponents that we are in favor, I don't believe they knew what they were in favor of, because I don't believe that they were told exactly what the article said, and not only that, the article has changed since then. So I think this is bad, because it sets a precedent for the town, and it establishes regulations on our neighborhood. As some of our people have said in the neighborhood, it's not homes that make the neighborhood, it's the people that make the neighborhood. And I can assure you that by changing some homes in our neighborhood, we still will have a tremendous place to live.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Time for questions and comments from the audience. So limited to one minute, and then responses from the opponents and the proponents. Questions? Please.
What is meant by one-to-one zoning?
What is meant by --
I'm sorry. Thank you.
Should I, should I go up?
Why don't you come up?
Okay.
So what that means is, whatever the square footage of your lot, your property lot, you can build the square footage equivalent of the building. So if you have a lot that's 6,000 square feet, you can build a 6,000-square-foot home.
Okay. Thank you.
Very good. Yes, please.
I wanted to thank both speakers. I wanted to make a couple of points also. This would not be a precedent in Brookline. Other neighborhoods have struggled with this, and it's not easy. But I'm a little concerned about two things. One is what I feel may be a misrepresentation about loss of owners' rights. And the other thing is totally unrelated. It has to do with open space and not losing some parts of Brookline that are not built up to buildings. We need every open space, undeveloped space, grass, trees, brooks, that we have managed to retain to date. And that affects not only us in this town, and not only the state, but the entire world.
Thank you very much.
And so, one of the things that I'm concerned about is the one-to-one thing, where it will be all --
Thank you.
Buildings and asphalt.
Excuse me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do the proponents or opponents wish to comment back? Very good. Next comment? Please.
Could we hear the rest of her comment? I mean, could you watch that? Could we let her finish?
Yes, we may let her finish. Is that all right with the room?
Yes.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
No, you didn't. It's good.
I have a question.
Please.
And the question is, why did the town pass an NCD? And I know why. It's just, this is thought development, I don't know who didn't want it. But why does the bylaw that was passed and seems to apply directly to the circumstance of a neighborhood that wants to protect its property, its neighborhood, its sense of character? Why do I keep hearing that we can't use this bylaw until it's done? And it's been a year since it was done. I'd like to have an answer, too.
You know, that is an excellent point and a very good question. I think everybody who's, who knows about this probably knows the answer, or at least the factual answer, and that is that last year, in response to a project that was at Hancock Village, where one property owner who was seeking to build a very large project in Hancock Village, in response to that, in an attempt to stop that, the board, the boards involved and people involved searched for a way to resolve that issue and to stop it from happening without changing the zoning. And this concept of NCDs has been a concept that is out there. Cambridge has them, Wellesley has them, other communities. And so Brookline adopted the NCD, and you're absolutely right. It's here to be used, and it is being used. So it's not, it's not a question that it can't be used. It is being used. It's very interesting that Brookline's enabling bylaw is very vague. Other communities, like Wellesley, is quite specific, and in fact, requires 80% approval. So the answer is, yes, it can be used, but I believe that there are a lot of questions that are unanswered in using it.
Thank you. Do you wish to add anything to that? Yes, please.
My name is Kathleen O'Connell. I'm also one of the petitioners. So the, the NCDs vary tremendously by community. Lexington, for instance, requires at least 30% active, actively, people that are actively against it. So the, it's, it's not across the board. Other communities require 50% of the people to support it. So, I mean, one of the things that isn't very well-defined in Brookline would be, what percentage is a good enough percentage? And so that's been something we have struggled with as a neighborhood, because it's unclear what is the required percentage. So we feel that we do have what would be considered a supermajority, in that we actually have of the people who are not neutral and who have actually actively voted, 70% of people in support. We do have people who have purposely stayed neutral and don't want their votes to count.
Thank you very much. Yes, let's start over here. If, yes, you, please. And I'm sorry, but could you identify yourselves as you speak?
Yeah, my name is Susan Moxley, and I have about three questions. One is, I'm not sure whether, whether the settlement itself has a, has any town meeting members. I just, as a point of information, wanted to find that out. Another thing was, since, it seems to me that most of the people who are against the NCD, it really boils down to worrying about property values for the most part. I wonder what, I know my friends in Cambridge have, live in NCDs, and that hasn't affected their property values, and I'm wondering if, if there's any data on how this might affect, in a big way, our property values. And then, one comment I wanted to make is that, you know, we are making this up as we go along to a certain extent, because we are the first group, not meaning we, the proponents are making it up, but it seems to me that's why we're having this forum, really, is that we're trying, we're the ones who are setting the precedent, and I'm glad we are. And, and I do want to say one thing. I think there's a, kind of, we're praying over and over again about if you're to believe this, if you're to believe that. I think everyone is acting perfectly with faith. Maybe not everything is exactly accurate, but nothing is not true.
Yes. So let's start over here.
Well, the first question was about whether any town meeting members, I think, live in the settlement. So, so in the amended settlement, the answer would be no. In the initially filed settlement, there would be one. That'd be my son. It is interesting to note that town meeting members in Brookline represent the entire precinct, and there are 10 precinct, 14 town -- precinct, and there are 10 precinct, 14 town meeting members that are against this article, and only five in favor. The second question was whether or not, whether there are any studies of values, how this might affect values. I'm unaware of any studies. I know the proponents say that it would not affect values. There's a lot of differences that affect percentage increases, or how fast you sell your house, or, I mean, you know, the question is really, what are you getting at? I don't think properties in Brookline, no matter how regulated, their prices really don't go down very much. Do they go up as fast? That might be another question. But there's no studies that I'm aware of.
Thank you. Either of you care to comment?
Yeah, there was one thing, but what was the first? Oh, yeah, okay.
I do think, okay, that's right. Oops, sorry. You need to use the mic. I think that one thing I would like to comment on is that through this whole process, we have actively invited our town meeting members to be involved. I think one of the things that has come out of this is that people in the neighborhood, I think, feel a need to be more involved in town meeting. Because we have realized that we don't feel like we have representation. Part of that being, I think the Merrells have been very good about coming to meetings, but quite a few of our town meeting members have not really responded to anything we have sent them. They haven't come to a walk we invited the neighborhood, they haven't come to any of the neighborhood meetings, yet they're voting on this. So I find it bothersome that a lot of you, I see familiar faces, came to a walk in the neighborhood, and you're clearly educating yourselves, and I think that's great. I wish our town meeting members, I felt, had done, been doing the same thing.
Thank you very much. All right. I can see a lot of questions, and I don't mean to be rude and cut people off, but I just wanted to remind people that we're trying to keep them to one minute, just so we make sure we get everybody in. So, over here, please.
Joanna Baker, Precinct 13, Town Meeting Member, and I went on the tour. How are the parameters of the proposed district established? Because it appears to me that there are other edifices, there are other homes that could have been included. So perhaps the proponents could talk about that.
I think when a number of us went to the meeting, the preservation meeting, where they talked about the house being demolished, it's on Akers Abbs. So the people who live right around Akers and Loveland, I think, were the people, a number of people were most concerned, because we've seen the developments right in our immediate neighborhood. If you look at the settlement, this area is kind of one area, but it does continue up along Elliott Crescent. I think we just felt, though, that that would be biting off a lot more than we could chew. And so we thought that we would start with this, with the understanding, as we met with preservation, we met with people from advisory, that NCDs can be made bigger over time. But we thought that that, kind of the boundaries of the park here, the school here, this is a different district up here, I mean, not a district, different zoning up here, and the houses are much different on Chestnut Hill Avenue over here, that this was a natural triangle, to start with, at least.
Please.
Thank you. I think that that's an interesting question, because who defines what the boundaries of the NCD are? What can you do if you don't like it, if your homes are not in it? I proposed an amendment which would take the Elliott Street properties out, right along here. And the reason why is that more than 50% of the people who live in those homes want to be out. In an LHD in the Lawrence neighborhood, one street in which a large number of people wanted to be out, were in fact allowed to be taken out. That hasn't happened here, but I'm going to bring that by amendment to town meeting. The other thing I think that's interesting about the boundaries is the home which started all this is here at the edge of the Neighborhood Conservation District. My position would be that if this home goes, it's not going to dramatically affect the rest of the neighborhood. Although, as I said before, the rest of the neighborhood is not all those little small homes, but rather, it's quite diverse group of homes here. So that one home going would not, in any way, in my opinion, detract from the feel of the neighborhood.
Okay. Next question. Okay. All the way in the back?
Mark, I think, I have a question. I live at the Rad Road, I'm actually a neighbor of Michael's son. We've been here for 35 years, it's a special neighborhood, I won't say all the wonderful things, I won't say how happy it is that everyone drops their kids off in their neighborhood for all the kids that are there this year. It is a diverse neighborhood, Michael's absolutely right. And my concern is that if we don't do something like this, it will become undiverse. I have 3,600 square feet of space I can develop on my property on the Land Row that is underutilized. We have flowers, we have plants, scale has more than 100 different kinds of plantings on it. When we sell our house, and we're not going to do this deliberately, but someone will buy it at some point, make it at 3,600 square feet, and we'll have a triple decker like this one next door, there'll be no open space, there'll be no square footage, and more people will do that in their neighborhood, and it will become an undiverse neighborhood.
Thank you very much. Either of you care to comment on that? Thank you very much. Please.
I just have one quick question. You raised a very important issue as far as, my name is Ray Codere, I'm in Precinct 11. You raised the issue of economic impact on home sellers, and I think that's very important. But the thing that you didn't raise, which I'm curious is your perspective on, is the economic benefit from individuals who want to move into one of these communities, who are willing to pay to live in a place that doesn't have these very suburban monstrosities. So they're paying additional money to live in an aesthetically pleasing neighborhood with open space.
That may be the case. I mean, that may be your opinion, or, I don't, I'm not aware of that, that people actively seek out NCDs to live in. Maybe they do. I think they look for just a nice community with nice people, and, you know, I don't think that, as one person who's opposed to this, has often said, there's something special about the homes in our neighborhood. In fact, what's special about it is the homes are different. You shouldn't expect that all architecture should be the same. It shouldn't all have the same scale and feeling and quality. As people said, maybe none of Frank Lloyd Wright's houses would ever have been built. Why we would all try to seek to have all the homes be the same, I really don't know. Now, maybe you know people who want to move into neighborhoods where all the homes are the same. I don't know.
I guess if I can just ask a follow-up to that, but if you are having a very large parcel of land developed, and a very large home built, would that then not price out individuals who would move into that community to make it a very sort of good and vibrant and diverse community?
It might. You know, I don't dispute that, it might. I mean, I will say, though, I think everybody in the neighborhood agrees that this project that was built on a vacant piece of paved lot with a garage and a single-family home and a lot of junk on it, I think, and that's right in the middle of Loveland Road, I think everybody agrees that that project is better than what was there. What people don't like about it is the homes were too big. But would you rather have bigger, newer homes, or would you rather have pavement and garages and trash everywhere? So that's a matter of just opinion, you know? So I happen to think that what's there now is better than what was there before. And to the extent that this NCD may have stopped that, I would disagree with that.
Please. Can we take? I guess we can.
I think that the person who asked the question brought up a really good point. Home, single-family homes in our neighborhood still sell for well under $1 million. You know, we're talking about $600,000, $700,000. All the condominiums that have gone in have been priced at over $1 million. So I am concerned that our neighborhood is filled with teachers, and artists, and people, professors, who are adjunct professors, and people who don't make a ton of money. And so I think that, you know, many people are so excited when they're finally able to find a house in Brookline, it may be small, that they can buy in a neighborhood that's charming, it's got a great school. And I feel like, as we're pushing to make sure we have enough affordable housing, it would be a mistake to be getting rid of affordable housing on the other side, which is what I feel we're doing when we do this. Okay? And also, the house we're looking to demolish is a charming two-family that sold for less than $1 million, and they're looking to replace it with two units that sell for well over $1 million. So developers are not going to buy something that they can't make a good profit out of. And I actually think that the homeowners probably would have gotten more money if they had sold it to a family. But, you know, they were able to close quickly this way as well.
That's very good. Okay. I think you've been patient. Thank you. Yes, please.
I'm Susan Knight, I live at 41 Akers Abbs, and I, we have only, I've only lived there for five years, and we are an example of someone who bought, fortunately, a place that was not very expensive as compared to the surrounding homes. And we were delighted that we moved into a community that was in fact a community with, that exactly has the character of which it has now. I have one other comment, and that is that it's, as I say, I've only been here five years, and no town meeting member lives within the proposed settlement. We have, Mr. Merrill just told us that we have 10 town meeting members from our precinct who are against this. It's really astonishing to me how a majority of our town meeting representatives can be siding with a minority of the people who live within the settlement. Only 30% of the people in the settlement are against this, yet over 2/3 of our town meeting members are siding with that 30%.
Thank you very much.
I think the answer is that the town meeting members that oppose the NCD oppose it because it's a bad article. The legislation is bad. You know, when I first read the legislation, I couldn't believe what I was reading. And I spoke to Neil Washinsky at the Advisory Committee, who's the chair of the Advisory Subcommittee on Regulation, and he said to me, he said, "Oh, yeah, Mike, we know it's bad. We know it was bad the last time." He said, "Just read the Advisory Committee's report on the NCD." "We know it was bad." I said, "Well, why did you pass it, then?" To your point, exactly, 19 to 4. But that's the sad part, isn't it? That he knows it's bad, they recognize it's bad, all the town leaders recognized it was bad. The proposal was to do this quickly, and then we'll fix it later. Well, a whole year has gone by, and it has not been fixed. Now we have an NCD that is really going to affect real people. And it needs to be fixed. And that's why the town meeting members are against this, because they know that.
Can I have a follow-up to that?
Do you actually can ask a follow-up? Would you prefer to hear from the proponents first?
Sure, sure.
Okay. Would I hear you here to respond? Okay? No, then follow-up, please.
I'm just questioning the wisdom of saying what other people who are not in the room think, because I'm not sure that it's accurate. My latest conversation with Neil is, does it reflect what you just said? So I just want to put out there that there are, I think it's dangerous to be saying what other people who are not in the room think and feel.
Now, in the course of this, I've been called a liar, I've been called a person who misrepresents things. All I can say is that in the entire course of this, I've never proven to be a liar. In fact, everything that I've said have been true. But what I think the key thing about what Neil says, if you don't believe me, and obviously you don't, is to read the Advisory Committee report, which is what he said to me. And if you read the report, you will see that in fact, there are a lot of concerns about the way this article is written. And that has nothing to do with me, whether you believe me or not, read the report.
But they didn't vote against it.
Oh. That's a different, that's a different thing.
My name is Pamela Julian, and I guess I represent the 30%. There's the 1%, and there's the 30%. I don't want to take up a lot of time, but I do want to ask you two things. I am the granddaughter of Irish immigrant parents, lived in the settlement for 100 years. So, you know, it's bothersome to me. I love my neighbors, and, you know, we're having a debate right now. This is great to come together. But I also work with illegal women voters, and we pride ourselves to critically evaluate before we make any decisions. So what I'm asking my neighbors to do, the 64 folks, or the, you know, the folks who want to go ahead with this, and I think in a hurry, is to take a step back, and let's do what other cities and towns do, and let's have a study. Because, like, in Wellesley, they'll have a study. They'll study it for a year. You know, we'll really critically evaluate each and every issue. I believe in green housing. It's not in there. I don't agree with the 30%, okay? I live next door to the condominiums that were built. Nobody was there, nobody cared, okay? And the reason why I didn't do an NCD or propose it, because I think it needs work. I'm not saying that I wouldn't support one, but I'm asking you to please come to me, and let's work together so we can peacefully resolve this. What's the rush? You don't have to rush to do this.
Thank you very much.
No response?
Oh, yes, we could have a response. Excuse me, thank you. Either of you here to respond, please?
I think the other projects that went in that were rather large on Loveland Road, one of the things that has come out as we've gone through this process, because I think a lot of people are curious about why nobody really ever heard about those. We did hear about the old barn being demolition, demolished. And part of it was, neither of those projects went before the zoning board, because they were not outside of, they didn't need a variance to get built. So I don't think it was so much that people didn't care, I think that they were sort of, I think every, a number of people were sort of surprised when those big buildings went up on Loveland Road, they really just didn't know anything that big was going to get built there. And at that time, the NCD also wasn't available, so there really wasn't much that the neighborhood could have done about it, since it was built within rights by zoning.
Can I follow-up at that? Because you're speaking about something that I need to follow up on. Well, first of all, we have an opportunity to create a land and home preservation trust in the town of Brookline. And we create a land and home preservation trust, partner with a nonprofit organization that is successful, we will be able to purchase these homes and speak to the NCD goal of creating affordable housing. This article does not speak to that goal. And furthermore, that farm, which I have fond memories of, could have been modeled after the Angino Farm, where the city of Newton came together, did a public-private partnership, and they purchased that property, and it stands today. So when someone says, "Oh, well, it was either the five condos or nothing," that's not a fair statement. So these are the kinds of questions and dialogue that we should continue to have. And how about bringing up next spring? I don't understand what the rush is. I really don't, Kathleen.
Thank you very much.
Could I just make a comment? Brookline did not, I'm a proponent, so could I just answer the proponents? Gail Fenton, I've lived here 35 years, I live beside the park. We have very limited green space in this town. We, I'm on Conservation Commission 2, we never passed the Community Preservation Act. We can, we've worked very hard with town meeting to get a conservation restriction policy. But the idea that we can do something with our land with a public-private partnership for conservation, under any existing financial arrangement, we've been working on that in the open space plan, and the whole, we've been working on it for a very long time. And it's not something you can do in a, on a small paved triangle. So what I want to say is, what has been offered is a way of preserving. We may not preserve that farm, it was gone when we moved here 35 years ago, but maybe we can preserve a little bit of the green space. We don't have a CPA, so that, it's a wonderful idea, but we can't do it.
Well, we can, so that's why we need to continue to have a discussion.
That's great. Thank you very much. I want to get a few more comments in, because we do have to get to the next one as well. Please.
I'm just wondering, I'd like to hear from both sides on this. This house that was spoken of, there's roughly 2,000 square feet property, and it could go up to 6,000. How would this prevent that from happening? And, yeah, I mean, ultimately, if there's no special permit, and it's as of right, what teeth does this have to stop it? And I'd like to hear from both sides on that. How does it help, and how does it hurt, if it has no teeth, or what are the teeth?
Well, essentially, the NCD commission, the board that's appointed, originally, I think people thought were going to be people from the neighborhood, who would know the scale and the feeling of the neighborhood. In fact, now we learn it's not going to be people from the neighborhood. So that board would be able to look at the project that's proposed. If it's new construction, it would be covered. If it was maintaining the existing construction and adding more than 30%, it would be covered. If it's covered, then you have to reply to the board. then you have to apply to the board. You have to go before the board. You have to have your, generally, you'd have an architect. You might have to have a lawyer. And then the board, based upon their regulations, which we don't know what they are, would be able to say no. That's how this would affect that project.
Ultimately, trumping the bylaws would...
Yes. So in other words, the zoning bylaw of one-to-one, they could just say no. Now, they might not, but they might. So that's how, that's what it's intended to do.
So one of the things that the board looks at are the adjacent homes and the neighborhood itself. So they would look at things like roof lines of homes on the street, frontages, how close they are to the street, setbacks, things like that. And so the house would be intended to work with designers to be congruous with the surrounding homes. And that's typically what is used as a kind of a measure for how design review takes place. And then working with an architect or a builder to try to get the house to be able to fit in, in a way that makes sense with the surrounding buildings.
Okay. I think there were a handful of additional hands. All the way in the back, please.
Hi, my name is Janice Darvish, and I'm a proponent. And I just want to speak to the comments that we have about what is the urgency. And I would just like to say that I have a large lot, and I get two letters a month from developers trying to buy my home for cash. And five years ago, I got maybe one letter. So there is a pressure going on in our neighborhood, and they will come, and they will buy up these houses one at a time and tear them down. And this is a neighborhood that has some significant history, the identity of Brookline. I think to let it go would be a shame, a tragedy. That's all.
Okay. I think this is our last question. That would be perfect. Great.
I have a question. I'm Harry Friedman from Precinct Twelve, head of the Town Meeting Members Association, which is co-sponsoring this. If we delay this, if, for instance, this thing goes to a study committee, or, the question was, what's the rush? Do we lose the house on Acres Ave. once the demolition delay expires?
I would say you probably, in other words, you, I don't know whether you lose it or not, because you don't know what the design is. But would the, NCD would not protect this, and it probably would be demolished if that's what the developer wants to do.
Okay. I think one of the things that we also want to emphasize is that, though we'd rather not see the house demolished, I think people are far more concerned about the size of what might go back in. So I think that the idea with the NCD is it gives you some way for the community to have input over that. Otherwise, there really is no input that you can have. And I think when your neighbor is putting on an addition or building a house, they live there. And so they do tend to hopefully think about their neighborhood and their neighbors a little bit. I really don't think that developers have that same attitude. Some of them, I think, definitely the people that built the townhouses, I think they talked to the neighbors around there. They tried to assage some kind of, you know, concerns people had, from what I understand. But when we listened to this developer at the preservation meeting, he really was more, "I'm going to max out this space, which I can do by right." So I think that...
We're going to move, thank you very much. We're going to now move to closing comments from both sides, and we're going to begin with the proponents.
All right. One thing that hasn't really been addressed, I want to talk about, is that we have really made a good faith effort to turn this into a process, using lots of people in the town to help guide us. We started talking to preservation in May about this. We met with them several times. They suggested that we have neighborhood meetings, that we had some more open meetings then at the Elliott Recreation Center, which we've done. We've invited our town meeting members to those meetings. The Merrells have come to most every meeting that we've had. We've met and gone before, planning three times. We went in front of the selectmen twice. We went in front of the advisory committee twice. We went in front of preservation twice. So I really feel that we have made a very good faith to follow whatever process has been laid out for us. Things have changed along the way. We've tried to listen to what neighbors have said. We've changed it from a twenty percent to thirty percent. Advisory tweaked the language as recently as about two weeks ago. And once the language was tweaked, it was sent out to neighbors, and with the idea being that if people had objections, they should get in touch with us. And since then, we really have made a good faith effort to record everybody who's for it, everyone who's against it. So I feel that at this point in time, I'm confident saying that two-thirds in the neighborhood are for it, with less than one-third being against it, and some people abstaining. I think the people that are against it have some concerns, particularly about property values, and also about wondering what the process is going to look like exactly. So we do have confidence in the selectmen and believe that the process is starting to be laid out. My understanding is the preservation, I mean, the NCD commission has been starting to meet already, and that as our project would move forward, it would be then much more laid out in terms of what needs to happen if someone's project does trigger needing to go before the NCD review committee. Looking at our neighborhood, there are probably very few projects that actually would have to go in front of the NCD board, with the exception of maybe demolition and new construction. Most people have not come anywhere near to bumping out their house more than thirty percent. So anyhow, we hope that a town meeting, that we get a lot of your support. We feel that the NCD is a great way to help preserve neighborhoods. And I think that that's something that's really important to many neighborhoods in Brookline. They'd like to keep the character of Brookline, while at the same time encouraging people to add on to their houses in ways that's reasonable and fits in with the general feeling of the neighborhood. So, thank you.
Thank you very much.
So thank you very much for all the good questions, and hopefully we've had some interesting discussion. As I said, when I first stepped before this microphone, this legislation is bad for the neighborhood and bad for the town. Some of the neighbors that are opposed to this are not here tonight. I can tell you, they feel very strongly about this. They're very much opposed to it. We've gone through a long process. The proponents have spent a lot of time on this. I have spent a lot of time on this. A lot of people in the neighborhood have spent a lot of time on this. I can tell you that there, in my view, and this is just my view, there's about fifteen families that are really for this, and there's about fifteen families that are really against this. And the rest of them are just sitting on the sidelines. They don't want to be involved. They don't, they either don't want to, you know, get angry with their neighbors. They just, whatever happens, happens. And my feeling is that those people really don't know what this is. They don't know the effect on their homes. They don't know the effect on their values, and they're just being taken along for the ride. If you have a two thousand square foot house, and you have a four thousand square foot lot, and you want to add eight hundred square feet, you're over the thirty percent. You're going to have to apply. You're going to have to go through the process. A lot of people in our neighborhood have added on that thirty percent. A lot of people. Some of the proponents have. Some of the most strong proponents have. And there's a lot of people in this neighborhood that are saying, "Why shut the door on us? We've lived here. We haven't added on. Our parents now are old. They're in nursing homes. It's going to get sold or passed down to the kids. Why can't our kids do what these other people have done?" And I think that's, that's really a good argument. And you go, "Well, because it's for the common good." And this is why it's bad for the town. Because this NCD, the first real NCD that is really going to affect real people like you and me who own homes, if it goes through at sixty-five percent approval, with an approval not being verified, that is a bad precedent. And it can sweep this town like you can't believe. And they're going to say, "We did it in the settlement." And I'm saying that this proposal, which was, most people knew was flawed, that is, the enabling legislation was flawed, recognized to be flawed, is now being passed down in a second flawed piece of legislation, which is going to impact real people, take away their property rights, and it should not be allowed. This should be either defeated, or it should be referred for further study. And I hope that if you're in town meeting, that you'll consider that position and vote no. Thank you.
Thank you both for an excellent discussion. Excellent. Very well done. Our next article up for discussion is Article Nine, the proposed ban on plastic shopping bags. Representing the proponents are Janie Gilman, a town meeting member from Precinct Three, a co-chair of the Green Caucus, and a member of the BNA Executive Board, but not representing the BNA. Clint Rich, and Clint, and Clint Richmond. Clint is a member of the Solid Waste Advisory Committee, but he is not representing that committee, or, as he said to us in an email, at least not the majority of that committee. Representing the opponents are Dick Benka, members, member of the Board of Selectmen, but not representing the Board of Selectmen, and Brian Houghton, Vice President of the Mass Food Association. So let's start with, is Janie Gilman here?
Yes.
Very good. Let's start with Janie Gilman. And a reminder, you have ten minutes to speak.
Okay. Clint and I are splitting this. I'm going to introduce our presentation. Clint's going to talk about plastic bags, and then I'll do a conclusion. And I just want to say, looks like we were left holding the bag here, because a lot of people who were here only for the historic district initiative left. I just wanted to say a word about the Green Caucus. I'm co-chair of the caucus. It was founded in 2011 with the specific goals of promoting a sustainable future, of reducing our impact on the natural environment, and improving the quality of life for the greater Brookline community. Our caucus was considering a plastic bag ban initiative when out of the sky arrived a document drafted by a petitioner who no longer lives in Brookline. Clint Richmond took over shepherding the initiative through the process, and that's why he's going to be speaking with you tonight about it. The other things that landed in our lap were the ban on polystyrene food containers that we're not discussing tonight, and Article Fifteen, talking about being proactive, about later being able to install solar panels on Brookline buildings. Clint's going to speak for about six and a half minutes, and I'll wrap up, and then we'll have time for questions.
Good evening. Thanks for coming out. My name is Clint Richmond, town meeting member in Precinct One, Six. I'll remember it someday. I've got four reasons why we agree with the petitioner who filed this article. One, plastic shopping bags are a huge problem. There, in the U.S., there are more than a hundred billion shopping bags per year since bags were introduced. That's representing trillions of just shopping bags. And just to remind you, what we're talking about is this bag, this style of bag with handles. It's sometimes called a T-shirt, because it looks a little bit like a undershirt. It's made out of high, high-density polyethylene. And Brookline's share, just taking that hundred billion and dividing into our population, yields twenty million bags per year. That's one person, one bag per person per year. That's a lot of bags. And these plastic shopping bags, here's reason number two, pose unique hazards. They can suffocate children. There's a warning on here that says, "To avoid danger of suffocation, keep this plastic bag away from babies and children." Twenty-five children per year die in the United States from plastic bags. The other unique hazard is that wildlife can mistake them for food, or accidentally ingest them, or die and become injured. And this is particularly true of marine animals. So if you imagine this, or a fragment, here's a fragment of a bag that I found while I was raking leaves. This to a marine animal might look like jellyfish, and they'll eat this. Or they don't know what it is, and they're eating a fish, and maybe a fish has it inside. These bags are entering their environment. They don't know what they are. They've never seen them before. They're artificial. They're an unnatural product, so very confusing to animals. The other is that they're a highly visible form of litter. It's the only form of litter that you'll see in a tree, right? Because it's so aerodynamic. Well, this one has a few things in it. It can be more aerodynamic, because I'm sure you've experienced yourself. And you can see them all, all over the country. Furthermore, they land in beaches and oceans. And a ban, studies have shown that a ban is the best way to reduce this litter problem. The third problem with plastic shopping bags, although this isn't unique to them, is that they do last forever unless incinerated. Remember, I mentioned those trillions of bags. They don't biodegrade, but they fragment first into, you know, little pieces like this. And eventually, they'll end up as microscopic pieces that are floating around on the surface of our ocean, intermingling with our plankton ecosystem. There's no way to recover these little, little microscopic bits. No proposals have ever been made to address that problem. There's the larger problem of floating plastic waste, which might apply to something like this. No proposal for that either. So that's the third reason. The fourth reason is that plastic bags are a relatively new invention. They were invented in 1965, and they were widespread by the early 1980s. But there are ready substitutes. We can return to the traditional bags that many of us grew up with, which would be paper, made out of a renewable resource, and easily biodegradable. There's also increasing popular reusable bags. The supermarket associations and retailers are promoting these, under agreement they have with the Department of Environmental Protection under the state. But by themselves, they won't be enough. But anyway, they're all, there are alternatives. There's also an emerging market for biodegradable plastic bags, if you prefer plastic for certain items. And these are items, this, this material will degrade in a composting facility totally. And they will even degrade. You may hear that it requires an industrial composter. It's a, but, you know, it's already made out of like a sugar. So it's going to degrade to a certain extent, even if nothing is done to it. If it just lands on the grass, it will start to degrade. Won't degrade as quickly as you might like, but it will degrade. It's a biodegradable material. That will not happen to these polyethylene bags. So those are the four reasons why we proposed this article, or supporting it. We didn't, I didn't propose it. But, and then you'll hear a little bit about some other solutions that are offered in lieu of this from opponents. And they'll talk about three things. Well, one is just to do nothing. I don't know if anybody actually is proposing that. But it's not an option. So that's why we're trying to take action today. The population of the United States has grown sixty-five percent since 1965. Plastic bag consumption per person is going up, not down. They're so convenient, and they're so cheap, that their usage is only increasing. Most of the, the reason that, I'm sorry. Oh, as I said, it's, plastic bags are unsustainable, because they are usually made from natural gas, remainder of some oil. So using plastic bags is a vote for hydrofracking, because that's where natural gas is coming from today, and that's what's keeping the prices cheap. So we can't do nothing. So some people say, "What about recycling?" These stores are, have taken some initiative to these large grocery stores and pharmacies, well, not the pharmacies, they're not participating, but large grocery stores, as represented by Mr. Houghton, who you may hear from, are doing recycling. But only five percent of plastic bags are recovered nationally. That compares to fifty percent for craft brown paper bags that you're, that are the traditional ones. So it's, it's, it's not really a viable option. Furthermore, this kind of recycling, they can't be turned into plastic bags. Plastic bags require sixty-five percent virgin plastic. But a paper bag can be a hundred percent, a hundred percent recycled, and those are the kind you see, for example, at Whole Foods. But it's not unique to them. That's made by a large plastic bag converter. They're readily available. So what happens to these bags that you, that you send to the store, that you, that you, if you remember to take them back, and you remember to clean them, they're turned mainly into plastic lumber, which, after it becomes plastic lumber, is not readily recyclable. No, you can't take that back to the grocery store and put that in the, in the container there. Furthermore, that lumber can degrade into microplastics as well. So it's not really solving the problem. It's just sort of moving the bags around. The demand for post-consumer plastic is low. It's, because it's a, it's a mixture of two different kinds of plastic. There's also these LDP bag, LDPE bags, such as this vegetable bag. You might see some retailers have that. They're contaminated. They might have food waste in them. They're difficult to clean. People forget to bring them. So this, this voluntary program that was initiated by the Mass Food Association only began in 2009, but yet we've had bags since the eighties. So I do sort of question their commitment to recycling, when they waited almost thirty years to start a program to do it. I mean, they recognized how difficult it was. One person on the town meeting list said, "Oh, I think they're making money off this." That's not true. Stores are spending tens of thousands of dollars a year, a big store, on bags. They might make a few, I mean, like a hundred dollars back on this, you know, this, it's plastic waste. You're getting twelve dollars per ton or something like that for it. So it's, it's, it's not going to work. And furthermore, recycling of bags has been tried a number of places, and isn't working. The third, the third solution you might hear about is education. It's been, it's been attempted with all recycling programs, to say, "Bring a reusable..." It's been attempted with all recycling programs, to say, "Bring a reusable bag, bring your bag back, we'll give you credit," or so forth. But these education and other incentives are part of that 5% solution. So it's impossible to stem a tide of 20 million bags per year in Brookline, based on cheap natural gas, with education and recycling. So, and furthermore, as I said, education, as part of that component, hasn't worked anywhere else. So, that's the summary of our arguments, and we look forward to your questions. Thank you.
I think we're ready for the opponents at this point? Am I correct? Very good.
Hi, I'm Selectman Dick Benka, and I'd like to thank the proponents for keeping environmental issues before the town and before town meeting, and I really am serious about that. But I do believe that this particular warrant article is flawed and would have unintended consequences. First, let's talk about some of the problems that Article Nine purports to address. One is litter. But I think you have to ask yourselves, how great is the specific plastic bag litter problem in Brookline? My perception is that it's not a particularly serious issue. We are basically a responsible community. We are also not a coastal community. Where carelessly discarded, plastic bags will end up being blown or washed into the ocean, and adversely affect marine life. We're not Rockport, or Gloucester, or Nantucket. We hear that plastic bags can suffocate infants and children. Well, I'm gonna pass around a compostable bag, which, we can just send that around. This is a compostable bag that one of the advisory committee members got at REI, and that would be allowed under Article Nine. Now, if you take that in a larger form, I wouldn't let a child play with it, but it doesn't even carry a warning. It's argued that plastic bags are manufactured from natural gas. The alternatives, however, particularly paper bags, are in fact significantly energy-intensive and polluting themselves. So there are problems with all of the arguments in favor of Article Nine. But let's look at the flip side. What are some of the problems that Article Nine could create? And I'm gonna focus on just three of them. Reduced recycling of plastic bags, the substitution of compostable bags, and the substitution of paper bags. As to recycling, our Solid Waste Advisory Committee voted no action on Article Nine, noting among other things that the stores now, quote, "offer a convenient and free way for consumers to recycle plastic bags." Article Nine, as drafted, it must be noted, allows small businesses to continue to use plastic checkout bags, but it imposes no obligation at all on them to offer recycling, just like the Globe and the Tab have no obligation at all to offer recycling for the plastic bags in which they're delivered. Ironically, Article Nine targets the supermarkets that do offer recycling. I'm sure we all end up with some plastic bags. Some get repurposed, they get used to line trash cans, they get used for kitty litter, they get used to pick up dog waste. But supermarkets now take back the plastic bags that we don't repurpose. And not just theirs, but they take back bags from small merchants, they take back bags from the farmer's market, they take back the Globe bags, they take back the Tab bags, they take back bags from anywhere. If Article Nine passes, that recycling will almost certainly end. The compostable bags that are allowed by Article Nine are not recyclable, and supermarkets would be foolish to continue recycling and to try to sort out compostable bags from other plastic bags. Plastic bags that are now recycled will enter the solid waste stream. And virgin petroleum resources will be used to make the products, such as plastic lumber or plastic decking, that are now made from recyclable plastic bags. The demand for those plastic building products is not gonna disappear. It's just that virgin petroleum resources will be used instead. Let's talk about the two substitutes that Article Nine allows. The first is compostable plastic bags. A so-called compostable bag is defined by a process that occurs only in specialized industrial composting facilities, that supplies high heat for an extended period of time. This is not applicable to Brookline. So-called compostable bags will not break down in your backyard composter, or your backyard compost pile. They'll be a contaminant in our yard waste. They are not compatible with the yard waste that we now put on. And if people innocently thinking that they have compostable bags, put them in their yard waste, we could be diverting, or forced to divert, yard waste into our solid waste stream, as opposed to it now being, as opposed to being composted the way that it is now. Finally, you should note that the official standard for a compostable bag, depending on the type of plastic in it, is that 60 to 90% of it breaks down into carbon dioxide, which is a greenhouse gas. That's how compostability is defined, under the standards that are referenced in Article Nine. Finally, let's talk about paper bags, the second permitted substitute. These have a significant carbon footprint over their lifespan. Trees are destroyed, the production processes for paper are highly energy-intensive and polluting, so that you're not avoiding the use of natural gas and other fuels, and you're not avoiding pollution. The bags finally are heavier than plastic, so they have a greater carbon footprint during transportation. If you like a large carbon footprint, you'll love paper bags. So even putting aside issues of cost, and convenience, and fairness in targeting the merchants who are now recycling, and focusing only on the environmental issues, I'm afraid that Article Nine misses the mark in its present form, and really does require some more serious discussion. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is anyone else speaking for the opponents, or I think, believe you have a few minutes left? Yes.
Four minutes, two seconds. Four minutes, two seconds. Thank you. My name is Brian Houghton. Thank you for the invitation here to address you folks. I'm the Vice President of the Massachusetts Food Association. We represent the supermarket grocery industry in the Commonwealth, as well as the non-retail segment of the food industry, the manufacturers, the wholesalers, distributors. But I guess I was here to talk a little bit about the success of our program, one of our programs that we're running with the Mass Department of Environmental Protection. And like the opponents of the article that's being proposed, we agree that also, there is a problem with the plastic bag, but not only the plastic bag, the paper bag distribution in Massachusetts. So we approached the DEP. We both put our heads together, we came up with a one-page survey that we'd send out to our members, asking on how many bags, both paper and plastic, that they've purchased in the previous year, to determine how many they've given out. What percentage of plastic bags have recycled content? Do they offer the recycling of plastic bags? Do they offer the sale of reusable bags? There are incentives for customers to purchase certain reusable bags that they run in the stores with promotions and such, and a number of things that they may do. They put reminder signs at the store entrance, signs on their shopping carts, in their circulas, they train their employees to ask customers if they want additional bags. We had this done back in 2009. We signed a memorandum of understanding with the department to have the survey sent out to all our members who voluntarily wanted to get involved in this program. We've reached about 383 individual stores out there. There's about 500 in our entire membership, but they've all signed on. The program's been a success. We had a target to reduce the number of bags, both paper and plastic, distributed by 33%. And under DEP's guidance and their oversight, we've been able to achieve that goal a few years early. We started with data from 2007. By 2013, we're supposed to have a 33% reduction. We reached that reduction in 2010. So the program has been a success. It's taken those bags out of the waste stream. When we started the program, not everybody was recycling the bags, as the Selectmen indicated. Our members operating in town here do recycle the bags. We have Stop &amp; Shop as a member who's doing it. We have Star Market as a member who's doing it. We have Trader Joe's, who's not yet involved. We're working on getting their involvement in the degree that we can. And for the time being, we have Johnny's Food Master, who's also doing it. Let's see what happens there. But so far, the program, the results have indicated that people are recycling the bags. All of the members that operate in the town, in the 383 locations across the state, are all taking the bags back. Not only theirs, but they're taking back everybody else's recycling, everybody else's plastic bags, their competitors, the produce bags, the cleaners' bags, all that can be brought back to the supermarket. And the program has been a success. We had an individual from Stop &amp; Shop who indicated that every week he has about six 55-gallon drum bags of plastic taken out of his store, and that was at one of the town meetings, one of the subcommittee meetings here back in October, so it was the Stop &amp; Shop person. But if we decide to go to the compostable bags that the ordinance calls for, our members will probably not be taking the bags back anymore, because they're not, you can't mix those with virgin plastic bags to recycle them. They're just not compatible, and it creates an inferior product at the end. So if they're forced to do that, I would assume as a business decision, they would probably drop their recycling programs. And if folks are forced to switch to compostable bags, as the Selectmen indicated, we don't know where they would end up. The stores obviously would have to comply, do away with their programs if need be. They wouldn't be stuck with the compostable bags anymore, because they wouldn't be taking them back. The town basically would be stuck with the compostable bags, with no place to bring their bags back, if that indeed does go through. So I would ask you to consider the success that we've had in our program. Allow us to continue it, allow us to have it grow, and I'd be happy to answer any questions at the end.
And the proponents would like to finish out their 10 minutes, and I believe they have two minutes left.
Just a question, are we having questions and then a conclusion?
Yes.
Oh, wait. Thank you.
Very good. Okay. And we are going to reverse the order at the end, and have the opponents go first for the closing remarks. So, questions? Comments? Yes, please.
I'm just wondering if the opponents could address Selectman Benka's statement that it's actually more environmentally friendly to continue with what we're doing. I don't know if I'm mischaracterizing that. Is that...
I think, I think there are really serious questions in this article.
I would like to remind the Selectmen that the Climate Action Committee that advises the Selectmen voted not to vote on this article, because there is no conclusive evidence that, that plastic bags have a lower carbon footprint than a paper bag, and, for that matter, a reusable bag. The Solid Waste Advisory Committee also, in their vote, said that, they didn't really feel it was in their mission either, but they all recognized that there was environmental damage being caused by plastic bags. I would also add that the Sierra Club of Massachusetts and the Humane Society have endorsed this article. No environmental group is saying that plastic bags are a route to a greener planet. It's impossible. You can't, you can't be taking natural gas and turning it into bags that are thrown away as an environmental solution. It's impossible.
You would be allowed to respond, since that was essentially a question, if you'd prefer, if you'd like.
There, there are a number of academic and governmental, and actually also environmental groups that have looked at the issue of the carbon footprint of various types of carry-out bags. And I think they almost universally determined that paper bags have a larger life cycle environmental, or greenhouse gas carbon footprint impact than plastic bags do. The, the issue of marine life, which is one that the Sierra Club focuses on, is, I absolutely concede a serious issue. But I think we have to ask ourselves whether it is a serious issue in Brookline. If, if we're being used in order to create an example of what can be done for coastal communities, we have to ask ourselves, what will the impact be for the environment for Brookline to make this choice, where we're not indeed a coastal community?
Questions and comments? Yes, please.
I'm Betsy Shergrose. I ask this question at the risk of my environmental soapbox, but I've been meaning to ask the proponents, and I'm kind of sorry that this warrant article was filed when it was, because I think we had a lot of thinking to do. But has anybody talked to the members of the Green Dog Program about the need, I can see Clint shaking his head. But, you know, we are all recycling our plastic bags, and if we don't get them from the grocery store, we will just simply have to go and buy them elsewhere. So I'm trying to figure out, without derailing this warrant article, how you figure out what the alternatives are for a lot of the things that a lot of us do, in terms of recycling our plastic bags, that if we don't use them, are gonna have a significant impact on our parks and open spaces. And I believe that what we have learned from the Green Dog Program is that our Parks Department staff spend a lot more time doing maintenance on the park, and less time picking up waste. And I just feel as if we haven't had as thorough a discussion about this issue as we need to have.
I'll bet you might like to respond. Would you like?
I'm happy to respond.
Oh, my soapbox.
I respect the fact that people do reuse their plastic bags for dog waste, but grocery stores are in the business to sell groceries. Their business is not giving away free bags, so you can use them for dog poop. There are other solutions, other than those shopping bags, which, as you recall, are kind of large. I don't know how large your dog is, but I think a newspaper bag, or any other smaller bag would be more appropriate in most cases. Even so, there are biodegradable dog bags, which I'd be happy to point any Green Dog owners to. I would also like to remind people that, you know, not everyone's a dog owner. I don't think that we're gonna be able to hold, to keep this up, just based on dog waste. And, you know, we can, again, there's the traditional solution of newspaper, paper towels, I mean, we don't have to be using plastic bags. Again, we don't need to be using natural gas, a very scarce and precious resource that is being used every day for secondary and tertiary purposes.
Thank you. That is a, is a very thoughtful question. There have been a couple of studies done on the repurposing or the reuse of plastic bags. I'm not aware of any in this, in this country. I don't know whether Mr. Houghton is, but there was a study done by the British Environmental Agency, there was also a study done by the Australian Environmental Agency. And they determined that about 60 to 70, one study had 60% of plastic bags being repurposed for various uses, the other one, 76%, I believe, of plastic bags being repurposed for various uses. And one of the concerns about an article like this is, if those bags aren't available for repurposing, will people, as Betsy Shergrose indicated, just go out and buy bags that are being created out of virgin petroleum resources? So it is, it is a real issue.
Thank you very much. And there was a question back in the back?
I'm Judy Myers, I'm from Precinct 12. I am now, I've been confused. I know that the supermarket bags are supposed to be bad, but I don't know which of the other plastic bags are better, because when you say, "Well, you could use the newspaper bags for this or that, and I don't have a dog, so it's not bad." But I'm carefully taking all my newspaper bags and putting them in bundles all the time, bringing them back to the grocery store. Now I'm wondering whether, when they're getting mixed with the supermarket bags, is that something that can't be mixed together? But I, we're told that you're allowed to bring all of those back to the same place at Stop &amp; Shop. Similarly, I think I'm doing a good thing when I use one small brown bag inside a plastic bag for all my garbage for the week, put that out on the sidewalk next to my huge recycle bin, fill the recycle bin as much as I can, and don't use one of those other kinds of plastic bags, you know, the big, the big trash bags that you see people buy, to put all the, all the garbage in, because I'm putting this little thing out on the, you know, to be disposed, and yet that uses one of those supermarket plastic bags. So are the big disposable bags that we buy in, like, packages of 10 that I never use anymore, because there's just the two of us in the house now, are they supposed to be better plastic to be using? I just, I'm, I'm lost. Somewhere, you gotta use plastic somewhere.
I'm sure you're joined by many lost people.
You know, and same thing for the waste, I'm talking about in the bathroom, the waste basket, those things. I mean, I am reusing, but I don't know what to use in its place.
Thank you very much. Would either of you share a comment?
Yeah.
Please.
If you didn't have plastic bags, you could go out and buy plastic bags made out of virgin material, and... virgin material and use those.
So are those big garbage bags also the same bad bags too?
They are...
Just as bad as the supermarket?
I don't even know that those are recyclable.
No, I don't believe that.
I don't think they are. I don't think they are. I think they are, I mean, I have not seen on, we have some, we don't use them. We use, we reuse, in our house, Carla and I reuse our plastic bags for various things, and the ones we don't use, we take back to the store. And also, the ones we get at the farmer's market, we take back to the store, and the store takes them back. The Boston Globe, I can tell you, does have a recyclable symbol on their plastic bag, so I know that those can go back. I can't speak for the Herald.
Hey, take those clothes bags.
Those big plastic garbage bags, I don't use them either. They are not recyclable because they're black. I mean, this is another problem with the recycling, is that because it has the dye in it, you can't use it. But in my home, Judy, I'm, I'm using regular paper bags for my garbage, and again, when we were growing up, we didn't have big plastic bags, and somehow we survived. I would, I would like to remind my, my friend, the selectman here, that we are a coastal community. We live on the Charles River, the Charles River goes into the, into the, into the muddy river, that goes into the Charles River, that goes into the sea. In Los Angeles, they found that twenty-five percent of the waste that was found in our storm, in their storm drains, was made up of plastic bags, as they're very light and float away. It's not just that they float in the air, but they can also go into our sewer, into our sewer drains as well, our, our storm drains. How many more seconds do I got?
Twelve.
I think I would, I think I would add that...
I'll just ask you one question.
Let me finish the other seconds, you can ask the problem, then I get more time. Whole Foods voluntarily withdrew selling plastic bags. They actually accept bags for recycling, because there are other plastic bags that are going on. So I, I'm a little concerned here that your organization is sort of threatening, or implying to threaten, that if these, if this ban passes, suddenly no one will be able to take back their plastic bags. I don't believe that's true. And, and, and a lot of grocery stores generate tremendous amounts of plastic film and pallet wrap, which like you see at Trader Joe's, because it comes at 10 o'clock at night if you ever buy there. They, they, they take that back, and that's much more valuable because it's clear.
So I think we had come, come and, and back and forth appropriately, and I had...
Yeah.
Clay went about thirty seconds over.
Okay. Thirty seconds, I'm sorry, they were thirty seconds.
And there was actually a follow-up, they still directed at his organization.
In that case, we bow to that request.
No, I'm not saying that we are threatening in any sense. I can't speak for my members on what their business decisions are going to be. I'm just saying that if they're going to look at a situation where they are forced to sell a certain type of bag, which they're all multi-state, multi-store operators to begin with, so that's going to interrupt their chain of distribution to begin with, if they're forced to distribute compostable bags only, why would they want to take them back and then be stuck with that compostable bag that they have nothing to do with, that can do nothing with? They can't recycle it, they can't send it to any place that's going to be done to a composting system. If, if I were a businessman, why would I want to take on that problem? That's all I'm saying. I'm not saying that we're going to go out and say, everybody stop collecting the bags now. I can't, I can't do that. I'm a trade association employee, I'm just speaking on their behalf and how it would affect their program in the operation in Brookline. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay. Questions and comments again?
Judy had a call.
Look, my only question, if you use paper bags to put out on the sidewalk, I assume then you're just putting them in a garbage can. Is that what you mean, you're piling them into a garbage can? Because if you put a paper bag on the sidewalk in the snow, it's going to go. I am, I just want you to know, I totally agree with reusable bags. I'm talking about the kind you get from the market. I have for each market, I bring them all, I take, I get most of my groceries in that. I'm just asking if there were a total ban on plastic, what then is the substitute for the small little bits that people do? And that's, that's what I'm not hearing, other than the compostable ban. I'm not hearing what the solution is. I'm not looking, Clint, you're not getting, you don't see what I'm saying. All right. I, I'm just saying, if, for people who are very careful to put out very little bit of waste, and also, for the most part, use reusable bags, even going back and using big double bags like at Trader Joe's, you know, the big, the, the paper bags, for the most part, you do that, but I just wondered what I'm supposed to use for the substitute for the occasional bag supposed to line the bathroom garbage, or put out a tiny little bit of garbage in one little paper plastic bag? That's, that's all I'm asking, and you're, I guess what you're saying is get a, get a garbage can for that and just put all the paper bags in it. And if that's what you're saying, that's fine.
Well, I would say, this, this is not a comprehensive plastic bag ban, it's only shopping bags. So you could still go out and buy any kind of bag you want that they sell at the store. I mean, so it could be a garbage bag, they could sell little ones, I mean, it could...
Right, but they're not recyclable either, so it's the same thing.
Well, right, so I mean, those are not a great bag, I mean, I wouldn't, but, but, I mean, that's still an option. But I think, I think the problem is that, that these are free bags. Remember, we've got twenty million bags here in Brookline, and people feel guilty that they have so many, and they're inventing uses for them, like dog poop. It, it, it's, you know, if you, if you were really paying for a bag, and some communities have adopted fees, and we thought that's too complicated for, excuse me...
What do you suggest you do with dog poop? I have a dog. No, I mean, like, you're so...
No, but I'm saying the fact that you're getting, if, if the average is twenty million, twenty million bags a year, and each person's getting one bag per, per household per day, or, that, that's, that's a lot of bags to use, so you try and find some way to reuse them. I'm a, I was a dog owner. I'm sympathetic.
Thank you very much. Do either of you care to comment? Okay, thank you very much. Okay, let's get some more comments.
Can I just make a quick comment on that?
If you may.
No, just to respond, part of our efforts too is to increase the, the use of reusable bags and the sale of reusable bags, and then we agree totally, that's the way it should be. You get paper and plastic out of the mix and use the reusable bags if you can, but in some cases, if you're buying meat or fish that may leak, or a chicken that may leak, you may want to put it in a, a plastic bag to bring it home. If you're going to put it in a reusable bag, you've got to remember to wash it out too, and that those are some sanitary issues. But part of our plan is to increase the sale of reusable bags in the MOU that we have. We're taking more of a comprehensive approach to the issue and trying to not single out one commodity, which is the plastic bag. There's more to the litter stream out there than plastic bags, and if we can approach just the paper and plastic bag issue in a comprehensive method, that's what our industry is trying to do, along with organics diversion, along with recycling the shrink wrap, as Clint indicated. So, as much as we can do, that's what we're trying to do, without the parameters of having it interfered with this type of ordinance. Thank you.
Judy, great.
I actually have a question, I'm right here, Precinct 11, for you. Have there been attempts to, I'm not aware of any, to de-incentivize sort of purchase or using plastic bags? And I don't mean just having an option, but I know, I lived, I lived in Ireland when they moved away from doing this, and you actually got charged if you didn't bring your own bag. I mean, that seems like something Brookline could pass that says, you know, it's a fifty cents charge if you use one of our bags. Has that been attempted by any of the members in your trade organization?
Well, they've sort of taken a flip-flop approach to that and said, if you use a reusable bag, you'll get a five cent refund, or a five cent rebate per reusable bag that you use, so that's...
But if you hit people the other way...
Well, if you're looking at an incentive in the pocketbook, if you're going to bring it back, if you're going to use a reusable bag and bring it back to the store and keep using it, a number of our folks have done those types of programs.
I want you up for the audience at home, because they can't, they can't work here. That's all. They just see me, I'm boring.
As I was saying, so there are the programs that a number of our members have offered five cents or three cents to use a reusable bag as opposed to the plastic bags or the paper bags. They've had programs where there are, they, they offer incentives for kids to design the reusable bags. They'll give away reusable bags on birthdays. So there are a lot of things that they're doing to encourage the use of those type of bags, as opposed to a tax that people may have to pay to...
But it would work to incentivize more use, I mean, if someone's being fined for not doing it. I mean, if the goal is to limit the use of these bags...
Our folks aren't proposing a tax. I mean, that would happen.
Well, that's exactly...
It would have to go through the whole market.
More excited than your opponents. Very good. Okay. Next question over here.
Joanna Baker, Precinct 13, again. This question is for Selectman Banka. I believe that what you proposed was, you offered us reasons why compostable bags are an alternative, but you don't look favorably upon them. And paper bags are an alternative, but you believe that they have climate and costs, a, a big cost for using. Do you have an opposition to the reusable bags that Judy and several people have mentioned?
To the, no, I don't. And, but I, and, and as Mr. Houghton has said, that is something that the industry is pushing. Frankly, it's something that Carla and I use, but we also do use the plastic bags, particularly if we have something like meat, or fish, or frozen foods. We want to put them into something that won't leak and something that won't contaminate the reusable bag. So I don't, I don't have any opposition to that at all, and I think ideas of encouraging the use of reusable bags, or, you know, a rebate or a charge conversely on the, the plastic bags are other alternatives that could be pursued. What this particular article does is to say, you can't use plastic bags, and you can use compostable, and you can use paper, and I think that's what's problematical.
Clint, would you care to comment?
I'm glad, I mean, there is agreement amongst all, all the people who've spoken here tonight, probably everybody in the room, that reusable bags are good, although I think we did get a, a letter from one of the plastic bag manufacturers who was trying to say that, that reusable bags will harbor bacteria. It was a little strange, but, and, you know, they're not really comparing it to your kitchen counter, I mean, it's, it's kind of a scare thing, and this is one of the problems when we're listened only to the people who are making these, these products. But I agree that reusable bags are the best solution, so, I mean, I think Mr. Houghton, Selectman Banka, and myself are in agreement there. And the, the distraction of the compostable bag is, is something of a red herring, because today there aren't any bags that, that would meet both of the standards that are in the, in the warrant article, except in Europe. There's a Massachusetts company called Metabolix that makes one, because there's also not just the compostability standard, but the marine degradability standard, and, but those bags are very expensive. So, I mean, this article doesn't even go into effect for a year, it'll be sometime before compostable bags that meet the requirement will, could be manufactured, and, and they'll be very expensive. So it's not that we're pushing those, but I think we do recognize that the plastic industry does have a lot of jobs, and, and if they want to try their hand at compostable bags, I think we should give them the option. If people don't like it, and they want to remove that option, you know, they're welcome to raise that issue at town meeting, but that's not what's on, on the table today.
Very good. I think we're close to closing, but let's take one more then.
My name's Diana Spiegel, I'm a town meeting member from Precinct 2, and I use reusable bags, and when I used to shop at Johnny's, which unfortunately is now closing, I would get a nickel back for every bag, reusable bag that I brought with me, and I thought that was good, but I actually do think that a nickel just isn't enough for a lot of people, and everyone has their price. I just wondered if people had looked into what's done in other communities, and is there a fee that really makes a difference? It's not a fee, it's a, it's getting a rebate, really. I realize this is outside the scope of this article, but I'm curious about it.
As the gentleman's, there was a couple of people, you know, it's very hard to push anything that some people might perceive as a tax, so the, the plastic bag industry is against any kind of fees on, on, on plastic, or any kind of single-use bag. I think the gentleman, I forgot your name, who, who's, his experience in Ireland shows that, you know, a sixty cent per bag fee will, will, will have an impact. So, and I think that's why we want to, we want to, we want to ban these bags, so we can get to the real price of the bag, so that if you need a plastic bag for some special occasion, then you have to pay for it. If, if, if you're being flooded with free plastic bags, the, the demand is skewed.
All right. I think we're going to close, if that's all right, and then, then we've got three minutes each for closing, and your side is first, the opponents are first.
Let me, let me take about thirty seconds, and if Mr. Houghton wants to add something, I would invite him to do that. I am proud of the town meeting members who are here tonight, taking the time to listen to the pros and cons of the two articles that we've discussed tonight, and I'm also proud of the town meeting members and residents of the town who may listen to this discussion prior to the vote at town meeting on these articles. Perhaps Article 9, the plastic bag article, should be defeated and come back in a better form, or in a different form, and some of those alternatives have been suggested today. Perhaps it should be referred for further study, but in the end, I just hope and I trust the town meeting will make an informed and thoughtful decision on this article. Thank you.
I'd just like to say thank you too for allowing me the opportunity to speak with you folks as a non-resident in Brookline, but I'm glad I was given this opportunity. Obviously, it's been a concern for not only you folks, before our industry too, the plastic bag, it's a target. It is. You can't face any other way about it. It's the elephant in the room a lot of times, but we've tried to go proactively to address the issue of plastic bags and paper bags. Reusable bags, obviously, are the best way to go, and we've always felt that way, that's why our members are selling them all. We've always said the bag isn't the problem, but it's what you do with the bag afterwards, whether it's paper or plastic. If you bring it back for recycling, it gets in, made into many cases for our members buying their plastic bags into other plastic bags. As was indicated earlier, it is made into decking and those type of things, and I don't know where the, the degradation of the decking comes from, from the products that are made from the plastic bags. I have a friend who's an engineer who made a deck about two stories up out of the Trex boarding, and I'm hoping it doesn't fall apart, as you indicate, that happens to the plastic decking that's made out there, but I don't think it would be allowed to be made if it did fall apart, in that sense too. But, again, the bag is the problem, and we hope to continue the recycling and grow the programs for it. Plastic and paper do both have their problems in production, as indicated earlier. The paper bags, paper mills, if you've visited a paper mill, the, the byproducts that come from the processing, the whole processing, the toxic chemicals that are produced, the use of plastic bags and the creation of plastic bags, as indicated earlier, there are problems with the production. So there are problems with both areas. We've all got to be conscious of that. We can use plastic bags in certain areas where they should be used and where we can use them, but don't flood your households with plastic bags. And that comes down to people thinking about what they're doing and what the impact on the environment is to begin with, from when they're purchasing to what they're doing with the product and the bags after they bring them home. But again, thank you for your time here. If any questions, I'd be happy to answer them afterwards. Thank you.
I want to thank both Selectman Banka for his comments to Town Meeting and to Mr. Houghton. I think this has been a great gathering. I learned a lot from both of you, and it's really, it's really important that we're all here. I, I just want to refute a couple of things that I think were implied, or if not overtly stated, and one of them was something that Clint answered to you, Dick, about we're not a coastal community. We don't live on the coast, but we live in the world. The reason we're here is because plastic bags are a worldwide problem. Every time I use a plastic bag, I contribute to the fact that there are forty-six thousand pieces of plastic bags floating on every square mile of ocean. Now, my bags, I may take care of, I liked your comment about it's what we do with our bags, but the fact is, if we don't use them, we don't create the problem. If you think it doesn't apply to you, jellyfish eat these toxic microparticles, bigger fish, fish eat them, and us, the bigger fish, the biggest fish, we're on the top of the food chain. It is a global problem, and Brookline has every citizen responsibility to join the solution. I think also that we've addressed a dichotomy, perceived dichotomy between plastic bags and paper bags. I happen to remember when there were neither. And so I guess the point I'm making here is that we can change, and if we are serious about our environment, we need to change. Change is not easy. It requires us to rethink what we do when we walk into Whole Foods, or what we do when we leave our bags in the car. I've seen many of you in the stores, like me, you take your reusable bags. So paper or plastic isn't the question. The question is, what do we do? Are we going to be part of the solution to a global crisis, or are we going to say, well, we're just a small community, we don't need to act on that? Brookline, in fact, is behind in the world community. Communities and continents all over the globe have addressed the issue of plastic bags, whether it's Ireland, Mumbai, Thailand, Mexico City, I mean, I could go down the whole list. We are behind in the world community. I'm a dog owner... I'm a dog owner. I was a dog owner in the 60s before there were poop bags. I want to say, there's a way around the way we have now structured our lives. When bags are convenient, they're very cheap, but they're neither cheap nor convenient for the environment. And that's where we get involved. Selectman Banka has said he hopes Town Meeting makes a thoughtful and informed decision. As citizens of the world, a thoughtful decision will lead us to ban bags. Now, this provision has waivers in it, so our merchants are not in the position of absolutely throwing out their current inventory. And I just want to make one more statement, and that is, this is not a solid waste issue. SWAC reviewed it and wasn't caught up in it. It's not a solid waste issue. It's a marine life litter and other issues that we've discussed tonight. Thank you.
Dan, would you like to add?
Well, it was definitely interesting. It was a great debate. I want to thank everybody for coming, the League, TMMA, the BNA of course, BATV for hosting. This has been a great venue. And of course, the presenters. Thank everybody for all that information. I really think it was a great night and I appreciate everybody staying late. Thank you very much.